That case will start right on time. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Beginning of the warmer weather, I hope. Let's go to straight for item number one A, which is the approval of the minutes of February 2nd, 2015. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions?
You are sure.
Motion carries. Item number one B one, BMCC. AA in sociology, AA in...
You want to move all four items?
Yeah.
Okay. AA in art history, AA in modern languages, AS in studio art.
Historically, community colleges at CUNY had a limited number of majors. Over time, with increased enrollment, some of these majors have grown too large to serve students effectively. The current AA in liberal arts major at BMCC, first registered in 1971, at present has an enrollment of 3,400 students, larger than the entire student population at middle colleges in the United States. So BMCC is starting to create new majors based on existing tracks within the AA program. The proposed action creates four standalone majors. These are AA in sociology, AA in art history, AA in modern languages, and AS in studio art. Since all the courses are already being offered, this does not entail new costs. This initiative will allow colleges to improve advisement and student tracking while offering students a variety of curricular options to prepare for transfer into a baccalaureate program.
Okay. May I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
These items?
Second.
Discussion, questions, comments? So, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Item number one B two, York College, MS in pharmaceutical science and business.
Yes.
Okay. The curriculum of the MS in pharmaceutical science and business supports the professional development and needs of industry employees and prepares them for managerial positions, combining research curriculum with business courses on management and regulatory compliance. The proposed program will be housed at the Department of Chemistry and the School of Arts and Sciences and will be supported by faculty from the School of Business. York College has a longstanding partnership with the Northeast Regional Lab of the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, which has been leasing space on York College and on the campus of York College since 2000. York faculty service FDA advisors and FDA staff members regularly teaches adjuncts and provide input on curriculum and professional development. Effective in February 2014, York College also signed a memorandum of understanding with the Federal Office of the FDA. Professional opportunities for program graduates exist in the greater New York area, as well as regionally and nationally, in the pharmaceutical industry and the bio-pharmaceutical industry, as well as in fields such as cosmetics and food supplements.
So moved. I would like to move this.
Second.
Second. Discussions, questions?
How large would this program be? What are the projections for the program? Can you tell us anything about it? What are the core components of the business side on this, if I may be so bold as to ask?
Is President Keyes here?
I'm here. As is the Provost. Where is he? Right here.
Okay.
So we'll just join you at the table. As are our Chair of our Chemistry Department, our Dean Chirico, and Dr. Chakravarti. So would you repeat the question, please? I didn't hear it. I'm sorry.
What are... How large is this program? And what sort of projections do you have for the number of students? And what are the core components of the business element of the...
Okay, sure. Let's talk a little bit about the master's program. The master's program is a discrete program that will be... will accept a small cohort of from 25 to 35 students into its first class. It is supported, in part currently, by an undergraduate program that we've had for about, maybe, six years, which is a bit larger, somewhere in the range of about 150 students. But we don't necessarily expect to recruit only from that group. We expect to recruit from the industry.
Across the system.
That's correct. And across, actually, the region. Because the idea here is that folks may be working in the field and looking for this interdisciplinary piece in order to scale the career ladder. So that they're looking to strengthen the pharmaceutical science component while being introduced to the business component. And what they want to do, then, is to move up the ladder into... in the industry. So that's the general frame for this particular degree. So, that's one aspect of your question. The second aspect of the question, I'm going to turn to Melatius.
The program is made out of 36 credits, which two-thirds of them, 24 credits, are made of the core part of the program, which is courses in three main thrusts of the pharmaceutical industry. One is in business management, the other is research and discovery, the other is in the regulatory areas. So it will the students in the program to be well-versed in those three areas. And then the second part, 12 credits, is to be tailored into their professional preferences. People who want to go into the business part, or into the regulatory sciences, or into the other, or into the research. So it will give the opportunity to the student, to the students or the participants of the program, to tailor the program to best suit their professional needs and growth.
Promise this is my last question. Is it... How much of that, or is any of it involving finance? How to set up financial projections and run the numbers with regard to pharmaceutical sciences?
Our program is more on the business management aspect.
On the management organizational side.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Is this a unique program, by the way, within your...
It is.
Thank you.
It is.
I thought it was.
And we really like the interdisciplinary aspect of it as well.
Sounds like it is.
I think this fills a tremendous need. I think it's a wonderful program, especially in light of the FDA presence on your campus. It's for internships, for students. It is just fabulous.
Thank you.
Congratulations on being the first. So, may I have a motion to move this item?
To move? To move in a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you for your support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number one B three, John Jay College, BA in Spanish.
This proposed program prepares students for multiple career paths, the result from the widespread use of Spanish in the U.S. and the many economic ties of Latin American countries and Spain. The program offers two concentrations, one on Spanish and Latin American literatures and languages, and the other on interpretation and translation, equipping students for work in legal settings, healthcare, and social services. Students will also be well-prepared for further professional or academic study.
How many students they have in that course?
I... Do we have a John Jay representative here?
Well, yes, we do.
Can you come to the table, please, so we can record you?
So are you...
Please identify yourself.
I'm the Associate Provost Scott Stoddart, John Jay. Right now, there's only a Spanish minor, and there are about 60 students in it. It's grown each year that we've had the minor by about 20 students. So there's more and more interest in it. What I think is really unique about the program is the translation aspect of it. A lot of schools in the area have been trying to get the interpretation translating off the ground, and this is the first one that I think is really going to do it. And we have our Chair of our department here as well.
Yes. Professor Dabbi is here, the Chair of Modern Languages and Literature. And I'd like to mention that 41% of our students are Hispanic.
Yes.
And we have 15,000 students at the college. So we're talking about many, many thousands of Hispanic students. So there's a lot of interest. Professor Dabbi, do you want to...
Yeah, correct. We have, as Dean Stoddart had said, we have had a Spanish minor since 2010, and it has really... the enrollment has increased steadily, from zero to 20, to 40, to 60, and now we are almost 70. And we are also working right now with certificate programs in legal translation and interpretation. And also, the enrollment has been over what we have... our expectations were. And we have more than 1830, if we consider both together, the two certificates.
When they finish this course, what are they prepared for?
Yeah.
What is the expectation? What are they going to be doing?
Correct. Well, the... we arranged the Spanish major so that there are two concentrations. One in interpretation and translation, and the other in cultural studies. But with a special emphasis in legal studies and human rights issues, because, of course, we wanted to mirror the focus of the college. And the expectation in terms of jobs is for... well, if you notice from our letters of support, for instance, on page 116, there is 116, and also 116, that is, the letter by Friend Chair, that is Co-Chair of the Advisory Committee on Court Interpreters, that is part of the New York State Unified Court System, and also the letter by Sandra Bryan on page 119, that she was the former Coordinator of the Court Interpreting Services, also part of the New York State Unified Court System. Both of them attest for the need of interpreters and translators in the New York area, metropolitan area. And in New York, if you go to our proposal on page seven, the New York State Department of Labor protects a 46.1 percentage employment growth rate in the field of translation and interpretation, as opposed to the general growth rate of 14%.
Thank you.
If... Yes, so I need a motion to move it.
Oh, I certainly am honored to move adoption of this proposal.
Second.
Now we can open for discussion.
This will show exactly how old I am. Are there any requirements, John Jay, for learning a language? In other words, this is not a requirement. Learning Spanish, translation, or Chinese or any language is not a requirement for a degree? This is an age thing? They don't have requirements?
No. It's part of the gen ed, but...
Sorry?
It's part of the general education that it's an option, but it's...
It's only an option, though?
Right.
Well, we used to have...
No, it's a requirement. It's a requirement.
But now it's dropped, and this is a BA.
Modern Language 101, every student as part of our new gen ed, it's a requirement. They have to take a Modern Language Course 101, that is a beginning one, and a Modern Language Course 102.
Great.
So that if someone wants to do this translation/interpretation concentration, they would have done 101. If they have no previous knowledge, they would have done 101 in the first semester, 102 in the second semester, and they will be able to meet the requirements.
Are the courses total immersion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Sorry, I'm not going to ask it.
No, let's move.
That's okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? The motion carries. Item number one B... Thank you.
Thank you.
Number one B four, LaGuardia Community College, AS in energy technician.
The proposed program, developed in collaboration with industry partners, will offer two concentrations, mechanical technology and electrical technology. Graduates will be ready for employment as energy technicians. In addition to being offered to LaGuardia students, the program will also be taught at the New Energy Tech High School in Long Island City, Queens, with the goal of increasing opportunities in STEM fields for minority students.
Energy technician, what is that prepared to do? Why? What are they going to be doing?
First, I need a motion.
I move... I move adoption.
Okay. Anybody from LaGuardia?
Provost Paul Arcario?
Yes.
Can you please sit there and talk into the mic, please?
Yes, of course. I'm Paul Arcario, the Provost at LaGuardia. These positions, for example, research and development of high-tech products, aerospace product and parts development, manufacturing of navigational measuring instruments, electro-medical and control instruments, that type of thing. It's a... And there are two concentrations, an electrical and a mechanical.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I move adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number one B five, Meca Everest College, BS in financial economics.
This curriculum offers a foundation in economic and financial theories and practices governing monetary and fiscal policy. It will prepare students for positions in financial management and economic analysis in the public or private sectors, where there is ample demand for well-prepared employees. Students will also be ready to pursue graduate study or professional certification, such as in financial management, or as a real estate analyst.
I... I... Yes. All right, I'll second it.
She heard to it. Okay. Discussions, questions?
How many credits required?
For instance...
Please identify yourself for the record.
And speak into a mic, please.
Okay. I'm Augustino Cracker, the Provost. I have the Chair of the Department. I'm Dr. Ebbe. I have the Dean of the School of Business back there. And of course, our President, Dr. Krup.
Welcome. My name is Chigian Ebbe. I am the Chair of the Department of Economics and Finance. Could you please repeat your question?
How many credits are required in this?
120 credits.
120? And can you talk generally about the extent to which they're divided into microeconomics and macroeconomics? And also, I heard, real estate analysts. Are there courses in real estate finance?
Yes. The... This is... The way this BS in financial economics is structured, and there are many structures that you see around the country for BS in financial economics, but as a structure fundamentally around a base of business management, with an emphasis in financial economic analysis, once the business course is completed, students now have to take required courses in economics and finance, as opposed to pure economics or pure finance. So there's more or less a core division. Students will take microeconomic theory, intermediate microtheory, intermediate macrotheory, and then they take intermediate corporate finance, as well as intermediate business statistics, because the degree is also structured to have a strong emphasis in quantitative analysis. And there are real estate courses which we designed newly, because we have not had real estate investment analysis courses. There are two real estate investment analysis courses which form a core, and then there's also an advanced elective, which, for those who want to go more in-depth into real estate investments.
How many students you have in that program? And how... What a percentage of Hispanic taking that program?
Meca Everest College, I wouldn't say has a large percentage of Hispanic students.
I understand that.
Right now, what we have had since 1973 is a general business degree. And over those years, students have essentially taken courses in finance as part of the elective. But now, the Department of Economics and Finance has been separated from the department that offers the general business degree. And in fact, what we have seen is that over the years, and we have the statistics as part of our proposal, over the years, pretty close to 20 to... 50 to 25% of the students who claim to be business majors take at least 18 to 24, 50 to 30 credits of courses in economics and finance. And so, from that projection, we are looking at approximately 100 students, you know, once we advertise the program. And then it will grow from then, because when students come for our admission orientations, we have also seen them asking, "Do you have a specific degree in finance, or in economics, or in financial economics?" And we simply say, "Well, you can do that by coming into the business program, and you can select electives in finance," which we have. We've had upper-level electives in finance and economics. You can do that, but many students are not satisfied with that.
Thank you.
I have a question. I see that you have four full-time faculty members, and about eight, five, six, seven part-time faculty members, and that you plan to hire three more full-time faculty members. Now, one more full-time and two part-time in February 2016. Is this a department that stands by itself? Is there a department...
Yes. It's a department that stands by itself, yes.
With four full-time faculty members?
Yes. Four PhDs, yes.
But we require at CUNY five full-time faculty members to be a department?
I don't think I am in a position to answer that question, since I'm just a member of the faculty. This is an administrative decision that was probably made between the college president and CUNY Central Office. And if it was acceptable to CUNY Central Office, it's not... it's not my position to answer it.
And as the Provost, we have positions that we have to get back to the department that we intend to hire. And we have positions that we intend to hire.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
No, I said, as Provost, you know, we have positions that we intend to hire into the department.
Yes.
Starting from the fall. So we have lines that we have allocated to the department to be able to run this degree program.
Yes, because...
Yes, we do. We have the lines there.
Good. And you have the budget to be able to hire full-time faculty?
Yeah, into the department, yeah, because it's a priority, since we are having this degree program.
The answer is yes.
Yes, President.
To the... I'm sorry, Rudy Crew, President. Yes, the answer is yes to the question of whether we have the budget to be able to do that.
Well, good for you, because most of CUNY colleges right now are struggling to hire people because of the budget crisis. So that's why this was very much on my mind.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chair, so you're... I think I heard you have three real estate courses, two core courses, and an advanced course elective?
Yes.
And do you have the faculty to teach the real estate analysis and finance now?
We have faculty to teach finance now, because we've been teaching that finance in the real estate area.
In real estate.
That is an area where, as soon as we get approval, we'll begin to...
Be hiring into that.
Yeah, to get faculty to teach the real estate courses. As a matter of fact, we are projecting to begin to offer the real estate courses only from about spring of 2016, so to give us time to... And I suspect, I mean, realistically speaking, that we're going to be looking at at least beginning from, say, part-time faculty, because it's going to take a while to actually go there and hunt down somebody who can actually take over the area on a full-time basis.
Well, as the real estate capital of New York, of the U.S., I can't emphasize how strong... strongly enough how important this is within the CUNY system, and that we get the very best people to teach the Meca Everest students these real estate analysis courses. It's a very, very important area. So I'm glad to hear this.
I know from...
But you have to hire into it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
But I know from Baruch, you know, that these faculty demand extraordinarily high salaries, way beyond the normal range of CUNY faculty.
Of full-time?
Yes, the full-time people. So that's going to be a great accomplishment.
Take that under advisement as we meet the...
All right. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Will you... One quick question, I'm sorry. In order to teach full-time across the board in these areas, your faculty must have a PhD.
Yes.
Because in real estate finance and analysis and that sort of teaching, most of the experts do not have doctorates.
Right.
They may have an MBA from Wharton, or even if they're Goldman Sachs, they don't have PhDs. And to have a Goldman Sachs faculty member, for example... Are there any ways that this can be waived for certain... for certain courses in program?
There is. A distinguished lecturer could be hired without a PhD at a high salary. That's a possibility.
That's true.
Yes.
And we've done that in the past.
Sorry?
We've done that in the past.
Okay, thank you.
So, any more questions? No, let's call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Thank you. Item number one B six, College of Staten Island, BS in Earth and Environmental Science, BS in Earth Science and Adolescent Education, 7 through 12 grade.
The proposed program will prepare students for entry-level jobs as geoscientists, environmental technicians, and geologists, both in the private sector and in governmental agencies. This field has high-projected job growth at both federal and state levels, with interest growing in sustainability and the environment. A separate version of the program, leading to a secondary education teaching certificate in grades 7 through 12, is also being proposed. There is a current shortage of Earth Science teachers in New York City, and the program will address his demand.
I move this for adoption.
Second. Second by Justin Matino. Welcome, the President. Any questions? No questions on this one? This is a good one.
Yes, this is great.
We're excited about...
Yes.
All right. Was there a motion in the second?
Yes.
Yes.
It was with lightning speed.
It was lightning speed. My favorite subject, you know, you know, super strong subject.
Wellington reminded me, and I made the motion.
Okay. Let's call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number one B seven, City University of New York, Independent Standing and Degree Authority for the CUNY School of Professional Studies.
This is a more unusual action. It doesn't involve a new program, but the authorization for CUNY SPS to become an independent freestanding school. The CUNY School of Professional Studies was created by the Board in 2003. At that time, SPS was formally made a division of the Graduate School and University Center, although it has always had its own governance structure and has not overlapped in academic offerings with the Graduate Center. Since then, SPS has grown rapidly to respond to the needs of the city and state job market and to serve adult students. It now has over 2,000 students and offers a variety of certificates, baccalaureate programs, and master's programs. The proposed action marks a new stage of institutional maturity, as SPS is embarking on a process to become an independent institution with its own degree authority and accreditation status. In other words, it'll no longer be under the auspices of the Graduate Center and University, Graduate School and University Center. SPS already has its own classroom facilities on West 31st Street, in addition to administrative space. All faculty and administrative staff are expected to remain in place. Once completed, this action will allow the School of Professional Studies to better serve existing students and will strengthen recruitment on the regional and national level.
I move adoption.
Second. Second. Discussion?
Who will the Director of the School report to directly, since it's going to be independent?
This is Dean John Hubblester.
John.
Trustee Shorter, how are you? Obviously, this is a very exciting day for our school, and, you know, I was the founding dean, and I am still the dean of the School of Professional Studies. I would hope that, as this goes through, I will continue to be the dean, and I would report directly to the Chancellor on this.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you for that clarity.
Yes. It's about time. Any more discussions? No, let's move the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, abstentions? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Very momentous.
Got the chance to welcome the President of Queens College.
And a former one over here, as well.
This is a historic item for us, is item one eight, one B eight, Queens College Resolution to Award an Honorary Degree at the College commencement Ceremony. The first one is Andrew Goodman, the civil rights activist. This is the posthumously awarded Doctor of Human Letters. And the second one will be Jonathan Kozel, educator and author, also Doctor of Human Letters. With that, I open the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and great to be here with the committee. The first one, Andrew Goodman, was killed in '64, part of the Mississippi summer, and along with James Chaney and Michael Schwerner. And, uh, this year President Obama, uh, awarded the three of them. But, uh, Goodman, the Presidential Medal of Honor, which is the highest honor that the country can give, is the first Queens College alum, uh, ever to receive that award. And we thought that if the nation was doing that, that we needed to, uh, we could do no less than to award, uh, him with the highest award that our institution could, uh, provide. And, uh, that is why we presented this resolution. I'd be happy to say that, um, it was approved unanimously, eh, by the entire Senate, uh, in, in the campus without going to the subcommittee because I think people felt that it was, um, in polite terms, a no-brainer.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Very well said, uh, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
As you know, uh, Queens College has been home to these, uh, proud recipients, I'm sure. And, uh, you know, ten years ago, I remember, uh, you, the, you honored Jerry Mitchell, who's the, uh, author, uh, and then the, um, we got to meet, uh, the Andrew Goodman's mother, Carla. And it was one of the most memorable, moving experience of those of you that have seen the movie Mississippi Burning. Uh, I think this is the reflection of the good work of CUNY and as well as the people who step up the plate to do the right thing. And so I can't, I can't be more proud of, uh, the Goodman family, James Chaney, and the, um, you know, and the Queens College community and the CUNY community.
Thank you. Uh, do, uh, the second candidate, are you voting separately or?
Let's move it as a block.
Okay.
Do it together.
Uh, well, Jonathan Cozo is, is someone who probably needs some introduction in, in, in the world of education. Uh, you know, prolific author, uh, founder of a number of, of, uh, nonprofits, uh, um, working on education. So, uh, we thought that it'd be perfectly, you know, fitting in, in our most important academic, uh, ceremony to honor someone with history or distinction in, in the college. So, um, happy to take any questions about him, but, uh, very, very proud to have him also, uh, hopefully be awarded a degree.
Yes, I, I move adoption of both honorary degrees. These are wonderful choices.
Thank you.
Second.
Without any further questions, then let's move the question, uh, the motion. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions? Congratulations.
Thank you, and I go back to committee of fiscal affairs, thank you. Thank you.
Number, item one, B nine, College of Staten Island, and this time is honorary degree at the commencement for Sally Williams.
Hi.
President Fritz.
I'll just re- summary of her accomplishments and turn it over to you. Uh, Sally Williams retired from her career of thirty-five years in the federal government, which culminated with working for the US Civil Service Commission, where she established offices and oversaw the agency's field offices throughout the Northeast, as well as Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands. Williams has held various positions for the American Society for Public Administration and has served in a number of high-profile community roles on Staten Island. She continues her work today as a community activist and has had a continuous record of advocacy and support for higher education on Staten Island. Bill, did you want to?
Yes, I'm, I'm just really, uh, so excited to present Sally, uh, Williams to the board for an honorary degree. She's a, one of the key community leaders on Staten Island. Uh, she has been a longtime friend of the College of Staten Island. I can't, uh, I think as, as far back as anybody remembers, she's participated in every one of our commencements and, uh, and main events. She was a founder of member, founding, uh, member of the Board of Directors of the College of Staten Island Foundation. She still serves on that, uh, on that, uh, role today. She has a, really a long-time, uh, history with the college. Her father, R. Lee Williamson, who is unfortunately no longer with us, was actually one of the founders of Staten Island Community College, one of our predecessor institutions. So she really has, has a, a lifetime, literally a lifetime of service and affiliation to the college and, uh, you know, probably one of our strongest friends that we have on the island. And, uh, you, you know, she was unanimously recommended to me by the honorary degree, uh, committee that's chaired by the provost and was unanimously, uh, approved by the full, uh, meeting of the faculty senate, uh, earlier in the semester.
Okay, so may I have a motion to move this item?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nays, abstentions? Thank you, President Fritz. Item number one, B ten, Baruch College, resolution to award honorary degrees at the college, uh, commencement ceremony. David Crowell, MBA seventy-one, co-founder of the International Security Exchange.
Uh, David Crowell is, is, as Wellington just said, the co-founder of the International Securities Exchange, which operates a US options exchange. Mr. Crowell has served as a chairperson since two thousand and eight and a director since nineteen ninety-seven. Mr. Crowell formerly was an adjunct professor at Rutgers University Graduate School of Management and at Baruch College. He has also taught seminars and workshops at the New York Institute of Finance. He is a member of the Baruch College Fund Board and the Zicklin School of Business Dean's Advisory Board.
Okay, and we also have a second candidate, Luis Alberto Moreno, president of Inter-American Development Bank.
Since two thousand and five, Luis Alberto Moreno has been president of the Inter-American Development Bank, a leading source of development funding for Latin America and the Caribbean. Moreno offers, embodies the best of business acumen and public service, much in the tradition of Baruch College's namesake. He leads a dynamic institution, centrally involved in shaping the future of the Western Hemisphere. In that role, he's been particularly attentive to issues of human capital in Central and South America.
And if, if I'm not mistaken, he was also an ambassador from Colombia to the United States. And I went to his residence in DC.
For seven years.
Wonderful, wonderful man, I have photos with him.
In that case, would you like to move them all?
Yes.
Okay, second, Karen, okay.
Well, thank you, we're, we're very excited by both of these, um, nominees for honorary degrees. David Crowell is a Baruch alumnus, he received his MBA at Baruch and as, um, as we've counted on his, um, achievements in, in his career, he has also been, uh, very generous to Baruch and, uh, serves on the Baruch, uh, College Fund Board and, uh, is very active in the, in the school. Luis Alberto Moreno, as, uh, was mentioned, was, uh, the, uh, he was actually born in the United States and he had dual citizenship because he was born when his father was studying medicine in Washington DC. But he had to, uh, give up his US citizenship when he became ambassador to the US from Colombia.
Really?
A tremendous achievement and wonderful, um, individual who currently is very active with us because in our School of Public Affairs, we're endeavoring to start an international affairs program with an emphasis on hemispheric studies. And, uh, he has been, uh, very key in, um, creating connections for the school in that endeavor. So we're very enthusiastic about both of these candidates.
Very deserving individuals. Uh, if I may call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice choices. Uh, item number one, B twelve, I believe.
Or eleven.
Oh, eleven, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead. Meghur Evers College, resolution to award honorary degrees, uh, there are two of them.
Uh, the first is Medgar Wiley Evers, after whom CUNY's Medgar Evers College is named. He's a seminal figure in the history of the American Civil Rights Movement, known as the voice of many disenfranchised Americans. Elected the first Field Secretary of the NAACP, Evers created new strategies to enfranchise and empower African-Americans until he was silenced by a shot fired into his back in the driveway of his home in nineteen sixty-three. And I think the appropriateness of this honorary degree will be evident to all. President Crew, did you?
Excuse me, uh, nothing more to really add. This is a, uh, it's an extremely, uh, huge honor for us, not only because it's the namesake of the school, but because his, uh, his wife, Marley Evers, uh, will be in attendance to receive the degree posthumously. And, uh, I could not think of, uh, a more fitting person in a more fitting situation, given the nature of the, the conversation in the nation and in the world, for us to honor, um, uh, him with, uh, with an honorary degree.
And the second person?
Is Bruce Ratner, executive chairman of Forest City Ratner Companies, degree Doctor of Humane Letters. In nineteen eighty-five, Bruce Ratner funded, founded the Forest City Ratner Companies, of which he is now the executive chairman. He developed the one billion dollar downtown metro tech complex. He is probably most known for heading the group that brought, that bought the New Jersey Nets and moved the NBA basketball team to Brooklyn. Ratner is a board member of the Museum of Jewish Heritage, the Metropolitan Museum of Art, the Brooklyn Academy of Music, the City Parks Foundation, Memorial Sloan Kettering Cancer Study Center, and the Wild Cornell Medical College.
I would only add that, uh, Bruce is a longtime friend. Um, he's been both a personal friend of mine and a member of the, uh, the college community in the sense that he has helped, uh, to underwrite many of our activities. In fact, uh, we have now had two graduations, uh, uh, at the Barclay Center as opposed to graduating in the city. And, uh, Bruce has been, uh, just a huge supporter of the Medgar family in, in, in many respects and continues to be so.
I move these, these are wonderful, wonderful honors, honorary recipients.
Trustee Di Martino, discussions? It's long overdue, uh, for, uh, especially the, the, how the college is named after. All those, uh, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Nicely done. Uh, item number, did you want to say anything? Item number one, B thirteen, New York City College of Technology.
Oh, that's cool.
Oh, I'm just keeping on jumping, School of Law, uh, item number B twelve. Um, Seymour Boyers, law firm partner, first chair of CUNY Law School, Board of Visitors.
Okay, the Honorable Seymour Boyers is a partner at the law firm of Gare, Gare, Coniston, Steigman, McCow, Blue, and Rubinowitz. Judge Boyers was designated as the first chair of the CUNY Law School Board of Visitors and served in that position from nineteen eighty-three until two thousand and two. He continues to serve as a member of the Board of Visitors. Judge Boyers has always been committed to public service and to the training of young lawyers. He helped form the Boyers-Davis &amp; Brown Public Interest Fellowship for CUNY Law School students. Would you like to add anything?
Absolutely, uh, my name is CJ Ortuno, CUNY School Law, I'm the executive director of development. Uh, Judge, Judge Boyers continues to be involved with the law school and, uh, he often says that if CUNY law existed when he was going to law school, he would have picked CUNY law. Unfortunately, they're only thirty years old, so. Uh, but Judge Boyers is a, um, is really a, a name that is spoken highly of in the law school and is thought of highly. And the students connect, uh, with him personally when they get a chance to, uh, take on a some republic interest fellowship to his name.
I'm so moved.
Second.
Trustee Shorter, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions? Now, we can go to the, uh, item number fifteen, New York City College of Technology. And the honorary is Charles Phillips, CEO of Infro.
Mr. Charles Phillips Esquire is currently the CEO of Infro, a company that specializes in enterprise software applications. Phillips was appointed to President Obama's Economic Recovery Advisory Board in two thousand and nine to provide advice and counsel in addressing the late two thousands recession. Phillips has made substantial contributions to nonprofits, schools, community groups, and civic groups. In two thousand and ten, he combined several of his charities into the Phillips Charitable Organization, a nonprofit foundation.
Thank you, uh, I would just add that, um, he's been a, a great supporter of the university. He's reached out, uh, we have many of our students, not only at City Tech, but at other campuses that are doing internships. And he's actually given the opportunity for our faculty to take part in some of his, uh, company's training sessions so they can get insight on how some of these ERP, ERP systems actually operate. So, we're very thankful to have him and I think he's going to be a, a good supporter of the university for many years to come.
It is fit very well with your school curriculum and all your 3D printing machinery.
Just happens to fit in.
I will move this, uh, for adoption.
Second.
Okay, discussions? Sounds like a very logical, nice choice. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions? Thank you, President Asa.
Thank you.
Uh, item number one, B fourteen, Graduate School and University Center, uh, resolution to award honorary degrees to three individuals at the commencement ceremony.
Okay, the first-
Near a mic, please.
The first of these is Lydia Davis, MacArthur Prize-winning fiction writer, translator, and professor for the degree of Doctor of Humane Letters. Lydia Davis, currently professor and writer in residence at the University of Albany, SUNY, is an acclaimed fiction writer and translator. She's famous in literary circles for her brilliantly inventive short stories, as well as for her translations of Marcel Proust. In fall two thousand and three, Lydia Davis received one of twenty-five MacArthur Foundation Genius Awards. Her most recent collection, Varieties of Disturbance, which came out in May two thousand and seven, was featured on the front cover of the Los Angeles Times Book Review and garnered a starred review from Publicist Weekly. And we have with us David Olin from the Graduate Center. If you wanted to add anything.
Um, just that we're very, I, I was gonna really say that we have-
Could you identify yourself?
Oh, I'm David Olin, the associate provost. We're very pleased that we have these, these three, uh, people, two of whom have MacArthur Genius Awards. And, uh, not that we're trying to pile on, but it's, you know, it's very gratifying that these people have been recognized in three areas that are really important to the Graduate Center, which is the arts, literature, and social justice. And each of them has made original and important contributions and it, to things that are very close to our hearts at the, at the Graduate Center. So, I, I mean, that, I have nothing to add to the-
All right, that sounds good, but maybe I should say who the other two are.
Yes.
Uh, the second one is Ajin Pu, Director of the National Domestic Workers Alliance for the degree Doctor of Humane Letters. Ajin Pu is the Director of the National Domestic Workers Alliance and co-director of Carrying Across Generations. The Domestic Workers Alliance is the leading organization working to build power, respect, and fair labor standards for the two and a half million nannies, housekeepers, and elderly caregivers in the US. I should say caregivers for the elderly in the US. In two thousand and eleven, Ajin Pu helped launch Carrying Across Generations, a movement to build a caring majority committed to allowing people to mature with dignity, security, and independence. Ajin Pu serves on the Board of Directors of Moms Rising, National Jobs with Justice, Working America, and the National Council on Aging. And just to move on to the third, that is Patricia Phelps de Cisneros, co-founder of Fundación Cisneros. For more than four decades, Patricia Phelps de Cisneros has fervently supported education in the arts with a particular focus on Latin America. In the nineteen seventies, along with her husband, Gustavos Cisneros, she founded the New York City and Caracas-based Fundación Cisneros. Its mission is to improve education throughout Latin America and to foster global awareness of the region's heritage and many contributions to world culture. And I do have a question for Provost Olin, which is, which, which of these two also got the MacArthur Genius Award?
Uh, Ajin Pu.
Oh, Ajin Pu. Okay.
Two thousand and fourteen.
Excellent.
Any questions, or, I mean, they're-
No, they're wonderful choices, um.
So moved.
Yes, second.
Discussions, questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number one, B fifteen, Brooklyn College, resolution to award honorary degrees to two distinguished individuals.
Hi.
Good evening, uh, I'm Matthew Moore, Associate Provost for Faculty and Administration. Um, it's a great pleasure to present, uh, these very strong candidates for honor, honorary degrees. Um, David Amram, uh, has had a career in music that is, uh, beyond distinguished, littered with names like Charles Mingus, Oscar Pettiford, Leonard Bernstein. He's very productive. He also, uh, embodies a number of core commitments of our vibrant conservatory of music and our arts programs more generally. He, uh, has exemplified crossover in a number of ways in his life. He has exemplified crossover in a number of ways in his life, in kinds of creative activity. He's a composer, conductor, and an author in musical genres. He's contributed to jazz, classical, ethnic, and folk, and opera, and also has brought his music into other areas of performance, theater, and film, and television. So he is just the perfect candidate for Brooklyn College. Our second candidate, Barry Salzberg, for the degree of Doctor of Humane Letters, is an alumnus of the college, of whom we are exceptionally proud. He has had not only a brilliant business career, winding up as the global CEO of Deloitte Touche, but has also really lived out a commitment to the ideals of the college. He exemplifies the, what, what students from modest means can do with, with a CUNY education, and with a Brooklyn College education. And he has gone on to try to provide the same opportunities for students like himself. His work with the College Summit, his, the fifty million dollar commitment that his firm made to advancing women and underrepresented groups in accounting, and his very influential argument for the business case for diversity. So he has, you know, really exemplified civic commitment, also in his work with the United Way, with the YMCA of Greater New York, and for our students in particular, providing an internship for accounting students from Brooklyn College.
Great. So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Discussions?
Quick question, do these candidates, have they been notified, or are they aware that they're being considered?
I, I honestly do not know.
I believe that is usually the case, because they're also asked if they would be able to attend this ceremony. So they're usually, of course, they understand that it requires the vote, approval of the Board of Trustees, but they are alerted, I believe.
Usually what we do is, we, we consider candidates without their awareness, but when the chancellor has approved them before their names are sent to the Board, to us, they're asked whether they are available on the day of commencement, because they have to be able to be present to receive.
Got you, and commencement is coming up very quickly.
Yes, very quickly, right.
With that, let's call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nays, abstentions, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
With that, are there any more items?
I believe we have concluded our business.
So may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know it's a long one, thank you everyone for coming.